I'd like to call this meeting if you're at Newark City Council order. Auto please call roll.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Marney.
President.
Mr. Ral.
Here.
Mr. Riletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
And Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
We have all presidents this evening. Next on the agenda is the invitation by Mr. Johnson followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
As we pray, let us have a few minutes of silence for your own personal prayers. Lord, we come to you grateful for the day that you've given us. As we reflect on the Fourth of July, we are grateful that our founding fathers and their decisions that have given us freedom and government of the people. Bless us in our deliberations. Help us make meaningful decisions. Be with those in need, be with those in joy, and be with the leaders of our country, of our city, of our nation, the world. And may we ever be your servants and grant us a peaceful world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the meeting this evening. We do have, we're going to discuss Rule 11 on 1658, a piece of legislation that got here late. If the minority majority leader agree, we will be doing that at the end of the legislation this evening. Next, we have the Minister of June 20th, 2016 meeting. Is the motion approved, guys?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ral.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Halls in favor signify by saying not.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports tonight from standing committee, one from finance, one from service, and one from ways and means. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, reports from city officials. We have one from Barb Jobs, our income tax administrator. The income tax revenue report for the period ending June 15th, 2016. Also without objection, that will be received and filed. We have no communications this evening. Then next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places where we have comments from citizens. One is now before the legislation and one is after the legislation. Comments from citizens basically is your opportunity to be heard. It's not a debate with council, it's just your chance to make a comment. So, anyone would like to speak this evening? If you would, just raise your hand and I'll point at you and come on up and you give a name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Mark Falls. My address is 193 Green Meadow Drive in Newark. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I pastor the Newark Baptist Temple in Heath and I live in the third ward. I've come to oppose Ordinance 16-18. I'm first opposed to this ordinance because of the ambiguity and certain discrimination that it implies in Sections 1 and 2. Section 2 limits employment protections to minority sexual orientations. If fuller and broader employment is provided to homosexuals, bisexuals, and transgenders, then heterosexuals lose. Section 1 appears to include me as a heterosexual in its protections. Section 2 explicitly excludes me. I understand that council members may fear being labeled as favoring discrimination. My prayer for you is that you will have the wisdom to see the discrimination this ordinance may cause and the courage, have the courage to stand against it. Secondly, I'm opposed to this ordinance because of its intensified penalties applied to crimes committed on the basis of a victim's sexual orientation. Specifically naming sexual orientation in application to ethnic intimidation is unnecessary because appropriate penalties are already delineated in the Ohio Revised Code. Finally, I oppose this ordinance because of the underlying agenda of the LGBT movement throughout our country. We're not asking for tolerance but for endorsement of behaviors forbidden by many faiths. Christian citizens of Newark have a responsibility to oppose all sexual activity outside of the intimacy of one naturally born man and one naturally born woman joined in marriage. Furthermore, our biblical faith does not allow us to recognize sexual identities other than the ones assigned by the Creator at conception. Mark 10:6 says, "From the beginning of the creation, God made them male and female." As a Christian, Jesus is my example. He loved all sinners and died in their place. But He also gave explicit instruction regarding behavior, even sexuality. As long as they do not seek to propagandize or cause disturbances at our private property, homosexuals, bisexuals, and transgenders are welcome to attend public worship services at my church. They will be treated with courtesy and respect. They will hear about God's hatred for sin and God's love for sinners. I too am a sinner. If I love other sinners, I am obligated to speak God's truth in love. And the truth is clearly expressed in Hebrews 13:4, which says, "Marriage," and of course that's by God's definition, "marriage is honorable in all, in the bed undefiled, but whoremongers and adulterers God will judge." An entire community, which includes many who oppose this behavior based upon religious conviction, should not feel compelled to legitimize sexual behavior that their biblical faith identifies as deviant. Now, I am not here to ask the council to act based on my religious beliefs. I am asking that the council not endanger my constitutional right to exercise my faith. I am asking that you not lead our community to further officially elevate persons because of minority sexual behavior or identity. I am asking that you not marginalize the majority of your constituents while giving preference to minority sexual orientations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak this evening? This young man in the back, then you.
Hi. I live in the sixth ward. Am I supposed to give my name?
Name and address.
Okay. Robert Mosspan. I live in Derby Downs Road. Okay. I just have this one page here. Starting in 1945 with the state of New York, this nation made moves to end discrimination because of creed, race, gender, or religion. Today, laws are in place to protect American citizens from being discriminated against in the workplace. But discrimination works two ways. You may discriminate against somebody or you may discriminate in favor of somebody. City Council Ordinance 16-18, while intending to prevent discrimination against city employees, may institute a new form of discrimination. That is, instead of protecting the LGBT community from discrimination, the ordinance seems to discriminate in favor of the LGBT community. In the hiring process, employers determine whether applicants have proper qualifications for a job. In the professional workplace, the question in hiring is whether an applicant will do what is needed to be an asset to the potential employer. However, the new ordinance would give preferential treatment to a specific section of society. For example, suppose two qualified people are applying for the same position. One person is a part of the LGBT community, the other is not. The ordinance puts pressure on Newark City's Division of Personnel to hire the LGBT applicant to avoid charges of discrimination. In this scenario, using the LGBT status to help determine employment results in discrimination against the other applicant. In other words, while providing fuller employment opportunities for minorities, the ordinance is allowing for discrimination to continue in another direction. Part of the American story is to end all discrimination. In our government, our workplace, we are not judged by our personal traits or persuasions. The rights we have belong to us because we are American citizens. Being an American citizen has nothing to do with one's race, religion, color, or gender identity. It is not based on whether one is part of a minority or a majority. In the United States today, whilst striving to end discrimination, we must not perpetuate it by favoring any section of our society. To avoid further discrimination, I'd ask the council to oppose the ordinance. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hello. My name's Allison Storitz. I live out on Beale Road in Madison Township, Golden McConie. I am a heterosexual Christian woman who believes that everybody should be given the exact same rights, meaning that if there is an ordinance that would support the LGBTQ community, I am all for it. I do not think that there is a reason that we should even have this ordinance because these should be undeniable rights for everybody, but since I know for a fact that a few of the members in the LGBTQ community in Newark have been discriminated recently, within the last few months, let alone previous times, but I know for a fact the last few months, that there should be a way we can guarantee them the same rights as everybody else, whether or not it's looking for housing or looking for a job. I do understand the comments that were made just now, but that's, you can take the exact same comments about how an LGBT person would be chosen because of the ordinance by saying, "Oh, a woman will be chosen because of this ordinance," or "A black person will be chosen because of this ordinance." There's no reason why we should be discriminating in any way, shape, or form, and that's my firm belief on this. There's also something called the separation of church and state, and I fully believe in that as well. Having any form of religion, for whichever reason, making decisions and how we are protecting people, I think is a bad thing because there's many, many religions out there. Some of them conflict with each other, and how in the world are we supposed to ever determine which one is correct? So, that's all I wanted to say, that I think that we should be supporting them as much as we possibly can because I think it's a good thing. I have not been able to read the full 1618 disclosure. That might be my fault, but I did want to step out tonight to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I am Brian Grove, 879 Adams Avenue. And I have lived in Newark for about 22 years. And I am very concerned as a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ and one who believes the Bible from the book of Genesis through Revelation. I believe in treating all people with love, just as God is a God of love. And as my friend Patrick Mark Falls said, Jesus Christ did come to this earth to down the cross for all sinners, and that includes myself and every single person. But here's my concern. There is a real danger, and I believe this is a first step and a lot of dangerous steps concerning my individual rights as a believer of the Lord Jesus Christ and practicing, not just to be practiced within the church, but I think there's a real attack on religious liberty. And this happens throughout the country, and this is a real example, in my opinion, of this taking place here. I pastor a church not in Newark. I live in Newark. And I've asked a question to many, I have called on the phone and had good conversations. But I have a real concern about religious liberty. If I'm pastoring a church, and my biblical understanding and my belief is that homosexuality is a sin, like what the scripture says. If somebody approaches and there's a school or some type of ministry outreach of the church, I don't read in real dangers of lawsuit. Some of the councilmen I've talked to said, "No, that's not what this has to deal with." Others said, "We might have to wait and see what the courts say." But this is a real concern. And I see it happening across the country, and it breaks my heart because I don't want to see it in Newark. I respect you, I've been praying for you, and I ask God that he give your wisdom, his wisdom, to you as you would consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Who all would like to speak this evening? If you'd raise your hand, so I'll have an idea. Okay. Let's start with the gentleman in the blue shirt back here.
Folks, I'm Dwight Davidson from 144 Beechwood in Granville, and I'm the pastor of the United Church of Granville, an American Baptist and United Church of Christ congregation. And a number of our folks are from Newark, and so I wanted to just make clear that, for me, I also believe in the separation of church and state. I don't think that we ought to allow anybody's religious opinions to dictate the rights of people. People have the freedom to believe that homosexuality is a sin if they'd like to, just as people in the South believed that black people could be property in 1850. If they'd like to, on a religious basis, they may do so. But that doesn't absolve you of your right as legislators to provide a just hiring situation for people who are LGBT in the community. I know a lot of people in my congregation who have faced discrimination at the workplace because they happen to be LGBT people, and they know they've been turned down for jobs because of this. It's hard, especially if you're a transgender person, to get a fair shot at employment, and especially when it's illegal for a person to turn you down because of that. So, at the very least, I would implore you to not bring religion into this and think about the people that are in our communities who need employment and deserve not to be discriminated against simply because they were created in a certain way. We know enough about science nowadays to know that it's more simple than XX, XY. There's all sorts of things, like Kline filters, X, Y. People are created in different ways. Anybody can look that up on the Internet. It's public knowledge, so I implore you all to do the right thing, create a just and fair hiring system, at least here in the city of Newark. And I applaud you for doing this when the state has not yet done this, when federal governments have not yet done this. I think you would join an august group of municipalities in sort of paving the way for equal rights. Thanks.
Thank you. Gentleman right here in the t-shirt.
My name is Dennis Moore, 10 Pleasant Street. I'd ask your indulgence because I don't do this, I've never spoken before like this. I'm a gay man. I shouldn't have to say that. And I think it's sad that I do. I'm an American, and that's why. I'm a Christian American. I was raised Catholic. I was born in 10 Pleasant Street. My parents lived there. Lifetime resident, came back recently from a job. And I was pleased to see this agenda, this 16-18. I'm not pleased when people tend to decide that they have a sort of a market cornered on Christianity. Christianity comes in all flavors. Understanding comes in all flavors. I spent the better part of my life in corporate America as an executive, and in that life, I was never able to say, "I'm going out with my boyfriend this weekend." I was never able to say, you know, when they said, "How's your weekend?" I had to mask it. I had to say, "I hang out with friends." All my life, I had to mask this every day, knowing, because I'd heard of people. I've heard vice presidents say, "That guy's queer, I don't think he should be part of our team." I've seen it. And it scares me because I think everyone deserves love. We're not asking for special rights. I'm not an agenda, thank you very much. I'm not an agenda. I'm an American. I'm an American first, last, and always. And when I can't talk about my day, I can't talk about my weekend because I have to hide, it's sad. I would ask the council, look at that and say, "These people shouldn't have to hide." And frankly, this won't end here, I'm sure, because the opponents will take it to the state and it'll end up much like North Carolina. But I would really encourage you to pass this tonight so people don't have to hide anymore. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. In the second row there, put your hand up if you want to speak again. We'll just go right down the row.
My name is Karen Lepper. My address is 3790 Milner Road in Newark. I am speaking tonight to support Ordinance 1618. Members of the LGBT community are our neighbors, our coworkers, our friends, and our family. They clearly deserve the same protections against discrimination in housing and employment that we take for granted. Our community can only be strengthened by clarifying that we will not allow such discrimination to take place. I know that some argue that we need to allow discrimination in order to protect religious liberty. I strongly support wide latitude for people to express their faith. However, our government is secular, and it may not privilege the religious beliefs of one group over the civil rights of others. The U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, which is an independent bipartisan agency that advises the president and Congress on civil rights matters, has stated that citing religious liberty as a reason for denying one class of citizens equal housing or services is a human rights violation. Religious people who feel that homosexuality is morally wrong are free to hold and express their beliefs. They are, however, not free to enforce those beliefs on others. We do not want to set a precedent of allowing legal support for bigotry. Unfortunately, the terrible events in Orlando last month have painfully reminded us that LGBT people are not free from hate and persecution. Let's show them that we've got their backs.
Thank you. Sir?
Brad Lepper, 3790 Milner Road in Newark. I strongly support Ordinance 1618 and its intent to enlarge the protections against ethnic intimidation and discriminatory conduct in employment and housing on the basis of sexual orientation. Yesterday, we celebrated the signing of the Declaration of Independence, which lists life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as our unalienable rights. The text goes on to state that it is the responsibility of federal, state, and local governments to secure those rights for its citizens. Ensuring that our laws explicitly extend these rights to Newark's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender citizens is not just the obviously right and fair thing to do, it is a necessary thing to do in order to uphold the letter and spirit of this founding document of our nation. If we don't do this, we are saying our LGBT brothers and sisters are somehow less than full citizens and are undeserving of these protections. I can't accept that. We should not accept that for our community, regardless of what the state decides to do or not do with regard to this issue. I'm here to say that I want my community to stand up and do the right thing now. After what happened in Orlando, no community can pass the buck. We must take a stand for tolerance, equality, and equal protection under the law for our fellow citizens regardless of their sexual orientation. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Thank you. I'm Susan Camps, 1619 Krebs Court. I hadn't planned on speaking, I just came to support this. However, I've heard a few things that kind of got me going, and I just want to remind you, yes indeed, Mr. Lepper did take the thunder out of my little top. I just want to say, I do remember the founding fathers saying something about the separation of church and state and about certain unalienable rights and all people being created equal. And I would applaud this council if they would approve this so that we can show Ohio and the world that we are a city to be reckoned with. We're doing wonderful things in our town. It's so exciting to see it grow and evolve, and I want everyone to be included in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak, would you raise your hand again so I know? Dan, then the young lady in the back. And then Mr. McDonald.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I'm very much in favor of Ordinance 16-18. And of course, I want to introduce my two children here, Austin and Madison. They accompanied me last year when I attended a wedding that occurred at the gazebo downtown on the day that the Supreme Court struck down all the bans on gay and lesbian marriages as unconstitutional. There was a friend of mine who was getting married, they announced it on Facebook, and I thought to myself, "This is just right up the street from me, I'll have to be there." And I had no babysitter at the time, so I thought to myself, "What's going to be the harm in bringing my kids with me?" And I, as I was heading up there, I thought to myself, you know, I'm, if anything, not only are they witnessing history to a degree, but I'm teaching them that there is nothing to be afraid of in seeing two people who love each other genuinely, you know, bring that marriage, you know, bring that about and through a marriage, make it official. And as you can see, they're not, you know, stark raving mad heathens now as a result, but when it comes down to it, I am proud of the fact that they came there with me and they just stood there, and they even applauded afterward along with everyone else. So, I thank you, Jeremy, for bringing this up. You know, you've been a brave champion for these, not only because it's a personal matter but because you see the need to defend others when they cannot defend themselves. And of course, I know we're not allowed to applaud during these moments, but at some point during the evening, you deserve a round of applause. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Yeah?
Mary Borja, 69 Cory Avenue. I hadn't planned to speak as well either, I just wanted to come support Jeremy, but I feel a couple of quick things need to be said. Many of you know me from working with kids in town. I teach here at McGuffey Elementary. And I understand everybody can have their own beliefs, but again, I feel very strongly about the separation of church and state, especially as a teacher. And our kids come as they come. I've had kids in class 10 years old, I can tell whether they were going to be part of the LGBT community at 10. Can't always, you know, but that's, I want those children to know that everything is the same for them as for everybody else. We have lots of students who have two fathers or two mothers or all kinds of different families going on, and those kids need to know that the life they're living is okay for them to live in Newark. Thanks.
Thank you. Ma'am?
First, I'd like to say good evening to everybody, and I was not planning on speaking tonight, but it's not what you believe in is how you react. And I'm quite sure anyone can look around and don't know what's in their family. So, before you start talking about somebody else and all this religion, clean your own backyard first because you never know what's in your family. And when you have children, we cannot talk about nobody's children or anybody because you don't know what your kid's going to turn out to be. When they're first coming to the universe, they're old, cuddly, and this and this and that, but you don't know what's on your hands, so we have to cut it out. And like, you know, you can believe what you want to. We all have to be a community working together. See, I've been discriminated against because of my color, and I know just exactly where they're coming from. I remember in Alabama where George Wallace stood in front of the Capitol to keep the black people out. I remember all this, and I know what it's like to be discriminated. Kids are kids. The kids accept things better than we do. So, we have to wake up, open our eyes, and love one another. Like I said, you can believe what you want to, and a lot of times, these things are set down our path to see if we love our children and people unconditionally. Everything in the universe is in our family. Like I said before, sometimes things are in your family you don't even know anything about, and you're going to have the audacity to put somebody else down. Like I said, I know what it's like to be discriminated. With everything going on in the world, it's a sin to kill, because people kill people every day. And if these people can keep you in business, you got to rest around. These people can come to your business, work for you, buy your food, buy your clothes if you're in business. Yes, still you want to discriminate against them. The kids accept things better than we do. So, like I said, I was not going to speak tonight, and I hope we will move forward instead of backwards. And I thank you all very much, and you all have a good evening.
Ma'am? Did you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Callie Rucker, and I reside at 130 Delmar Avenue in Newark, Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for everyone? One more. One more. Two more. Ma'am, and then you, and then.
My name is Wendy Danielson. I live at 701 East Main Street. I too wasn't going to speak tonight. I did have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. The LGBT community all over the country, I have seen how it has, I'm sorry, I'm a very emotional person, it has come in and destroyed small businesses, of which I am Discrimination, I think we all suffer discrimination, and my question is, I have a sister who is morbidly obese. She gets laughed at every day when she's walking down the street. She has a hard time finding a job, I mean, getting promoted in her job. She has a great job, but she has a hard time getting promoted because they take one look at her and think she doesn't have a brain. I wonder, my question is, what makes the LGBT community so special that they deserve their own, whatever it's called, to take care of their discrimination? I can see small businesses in this community going down south. If I'm told who I have to hire and who I don't, fortunately, I only have part-time people right now, but if I have to be told who I'm going to hire in my small business, that's going to shut me down. And I hate to see that happen to a lot of small businesses in this community. And I hate to see that happen to a lot of small businesses in this community. Again, I'd just like to ask, what makes the LGBT community so special that they deserve this?
Thank you. Yeah, ma'am? Is there anyone else?
My name's Nate Humphrey, I live at 154 Looking View Drive in Heath, I spent the last 15 or 20 years of my life in Newark, and I'll be soon be moving back to Newark, how much my life is in Newark. I want to step up tonight and just mention, just as you've seen both sides of the equation tonight, and neither of them is necessarily bigoted in their desire to beat down the other individual, and you cannot, and we all actually, though we say it, we know you cannot remove your religious opinion from this, and so I would just like to mention that this is not even a religious opinion. When you look at the, what is being pushed tonight, which will be, that which will be voted on tonight, those of us that do not want it passed are mentioning it in the aspect of, it is actually not, it is not as responsibly put together as it could be in that, though it does give those that may have been discriminated against in the past, in the past some help in the future, it does not necessarily help those that are fine right now. It does kind of get, put some things against them, and though it might be the desire of the LGBT community to not be discriminated against, I would trust that even in doing that, they would not want to then turn the table against others, and so I encourage you, I'm not, and I'll just be honest with you, I don't want anything like this passed, ever, but if it is going to be passed, can we at least put it off now so that in the future, a more responsible document can be put together that does not leave one side of the equation in a difficult situation, in the, in the aspect of, if someone, perhaps for their religious beliefs, chooses not to hire someone because of their, what they would, you know, describe as their orientation, say, listen, I don't feel comfortable hiring you, I'm not hateful, I'm not upset at you, but it's just, it's not proper, I wouldn't feel comfortable with it, and that person's going to go away, and as has been mentioned tonight, phone calls have been made, and some of you do not know what will happen to churches or other nonprofit organizations that simply turn them away, will they become after, or are they safe? Or are they safe in saying that, not in an angry, not in a hateful way, but just saying, hey, listen, I just don't feel comfortable with that, and this person's fine? A document can be put together that you can say, no, no, this protects them, if they turn them away, they can turn them away for other reasons. And I would just encourage that, as you consider this.
Mr. McElroy? Last but not least.
Didn't know I was going to have to follow that, but Dave McElroy, 153 North 39th Street, kind of changing gears here a little bit, appreciate everybody's comments on that issue, but there is another issue at council tonight I'd like to speak of. I'm speaking as President of IFF Local 109 in regards to Ordinance 16-17. I know most of you come to these meetings with your minds made up on how you plan to vote on issues, my hope is you will keep an open mind and take into account my comments and a minimum, possibly table, Ordinance 1617 until it can be discussed at the bargaining table. I'd first like to say once again, as I did a couple of weeks ago, this is clearly an issue that is subject to collective bargaining and must be negotiated. I've been advised that the city knows that they have to negotiate this position, but they just want to go ahead and create the position and then negotiate. Why not wait for collective bargaining process to happen? And I would submit that question officially to be answered before you vote on it. Is the city planning on filling this before they negotiate? And if they're not, then what, what is the need to rush? Once again, this is a solution looking for a problem. How does this help with public safety? Does it do anything to make our city or our citizens safer? I sat and listened as this was proposed a couple of weeks ago, and then I reviewed the video several times, and I would like to respond to several comments that were made. Currently, our Assistant Chiefs are and have always been in the bargaining union, and are second-in-command of the Fire Chief for at least as long as anyone alive today can remember. Why the need to change now? A time when we continue to see cuts in essential city services, why now? Our current Fire Chief, Pat Conner, according to his statement, served as Administrative Assistant Chief in the Union for four years. According to the chief's comments at the committee meeting, there is a conflict for that Assistant Chief being in the Union, and he may not have the city's best interest in mind. Yet, this administration made him Fire Chief. Our current Safety Director, Bill Spurgeon, also was a Union Assistant Chief, who the mayor had enough confidence in to make him Safety Director. Again, these both past Union members must have had showed trust in having the city's best interest in mind. As an insult to every firefighter that commits their life to serving this city, who every day comes to work willing to give their life for all of us, is this administration implying that these firefighters may not have the city's best interest in mind because they are a Union member? I'm beginning to wonder whose best interest we are speaking of. According to the Fire Chief, grievance and disciplinary issues are a problem in the chief's absence. Neither has ever been an issue, to my understanding. Both have a due process that allows time for the Fire Chief to address if he happens to be out of town on vacation, for example. We have never held, not in my time, and I've been here 27 years, we've never held a grievance hearing at the chief's level without waiting for the chief to be there. We have never had an Assistant Chief, acting as chief, hold a grievance hearing, enroll in grievances at the chief's level, and extension has always been granted so the chief can be there. Again, this is clearly a solution looking for a problem. The position of Acting Chief currently uses an Assistant Chief in the chief's absence. He does have, they do have functional authority and can and do uphold rules, standard operating procedures, and the contract, as well as the ability to conduct city business. They have been doing so for years. Comments were made by Councilman Marmy. The current model, we just can't afford. Yet, the answer is to create a higher-paying management position, a position that does nothing to add to firefighters available to take fire in EMS rooms. The proposed model is one that negatively impacts public safety. Surely, we can't afford that. The chief stated he would intend on promoting from within, someone could possibly retire, then apply. So today, you're a Union Assistant Chief, and the accusation is, you don't have the city's best interest in mind. But tomorrow, take me out of the Union, pay me more, and call me a Deputy Chief, and I will. That is ludicrous, insulting to every Union member, and especially our current Assistant Chiefs. The Fire Chief also stated he needed this position to have someone to confide in and to assist in negotiations. We have a mayor, a Safety Director, an HR Director, a Service Director, a Law Director, and many more, and the city historically spends tens of thousands of dollars on a labor attorney to negotiate against the Union. Do we really need more management? I believe our firefighters have the city's best interest in mind. We are the ones who continue to fight for safe staffing for our citizens' safety while others build new buildings, shut down stations, cut staffing, fight to create a new management position. All these things, we do not believe to be in the best interest of the safety of the citizens of Newark. The current management system is working, and this is nothing more than an expensive fix to a non-existent issue, a solution looking for a problem. As I asked a couple of weeks ago, the question I believe you need to ask yourself is, do you believe that creating an office strictly managerial position at a time that we continue to see cuts in essential services will truly make our city and our citizens safe? I ask you, table Ordinance 1617 or vote it down until it can be negotiated as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Okay, we're going to move on to, Ordinance is on the second reading, 16-17.
Ordinance 16-17 by Mr. Frazier, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Johnson, and Ordinance amending the position, classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the Department of Safety, Division of Fire by creating a classification of Deputy Fire Chief and setting the compensation therefore, and abolishing one Assistant Chief position by attrition.
You've heard your second reading of 16-17, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bob.
I make the motion to adopt Ordinance 16-17.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bob. Second, second by Mr. Rath. Is there any discussion on 16-17? Mr. Roth?
Mr. President, thank you. I will not be supporting this proposal tonight. First of all, this is an issue that should be handled at the bargaining table during negotiations, which are set to begin shortly anyway. The bottom line is, this current Assistant Chief position can be used to help fill overtime shifts, and also an efficient medic shift per month, which can help supplement our staffing a little slightly. That can be done with this new Deputy position, and we need more first responders on the street as it is, not less. Lastly, I don't think it's wise for us to handpick a position for a $5,000 raise the same night that everyone's talking about putting a tax increase on the ballot, because we don't have enough money. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Anyone else? Mr. President? Mr. Frazier?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Sorry. As this position, it's a delicate balance between supporting the administration and protecting the rights of the people, and ultimately, when I hear the administration has a need in the Division of Fire, I listen, and the hope is, is to do the right thing. And through attrition and filling this position, if it gives the chief the needed resources that he's recommending, I'm going to go forward with his recommendation. And I understand the Union is losing a position and an Assistant Chief, but the hope is the city is gaining a Deputy Chief, and that could serve into the interests of our city in general. And with that, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Office has called a roll vote?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Oletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
No.
16-17 passes eight to two. Next on the agenda, we have 16-18.
Ordinance 16-18 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Ordinance amending Chapters 254, 628, and 636 of the codified ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation.
Before we vote on this, I would like to applaud everybody this evening on how courteous you've been, and how just well-spoken, and how nice you are. It doesn't happen at all the time, so thank you for that kind of an audience. You've heard your second reading, 16-18, what is your wish?
Mr. President? Move to adopt Ordinance 1618.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-18? Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to amend 1618. I believe all members of council have copies of the amendment.
Second amendment. Motion to amend, and second, what is your amendment, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, currently, we counsel first adopted the term sexual orientation in 2014, which was a unanimous vote, I'd like to remind members of council. That definition that we adopted reads the following: Sexual orientation means a person actual or perceived homosexuality, bisexuality, or heterosexuality, or transgender by orientation or practice by and between consenting adults. That's our definition currently on the books. I believe the intent at that time, we had updated our ordinances within the Human Relations Section, and so tonight, in working with Equality Ohio and other people, the term that we best want to use is gender identity or expression. And so basically, we're taking out transgender, and then the amendment just clarifies the language to have gender identity or expression. So there's really no change, it's just taking transgender out and using gender identity or expression.
1618-A, everybody's packed.
That's correct.
And that would be in Section 6, correct?
It would go through the Human Relations, 1618-A is longer because it goes through the Human Relations Code, the Equal Employment Opportunity Code, the Fair Housing, and the Ethic Intimidation Code. So that's why, if people are worried, they're going to be about to blink the pages, that's why. Did I say all that right, Director Sassen?
Is there any discussion about the amendment? See, now, the office has called a roll vote?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Oletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
1618 has now been changed to 1618-A. Is there any other discussion on this?
Mr. President, thank you. You know, I think, I think I first want to start off some comments with some thank yous. I want to thank, well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Oletta, he's been an ally and supporter in this whole journey. I think it was a few months ago, we had went over to Columbus and Equality Ohio, which I know there's representation out in the audience for that organization. We met with them and talked about, you know, how can we make Newark more inclusive? How can we make Newark a more welcoming community? And they had, unbeknownst to us, they had already looked at our ordinances and provided some suggestions, and so I first want to thank Equality Ohio for their, for the work that we have tonight for this vote. I also want to thank Director Sassen, you know, drafting legislation is, you know, it's legal work that the Director's Office does, and so I want to thank him and his cooperation and his office for all the work that they've done. I think, you know, when we're talking about this issue, it's difficult for me to speak because it does affect me personally. I am the only member up here who is openly gay, and so I don't choose who I be. So, you know, when people throw around the term preference or behavior, it's my orientation, it is who I am, it is who, I see several friends and allies in the audience, it's who we are. You know, so it's not as though I woke up one morning in Newark and chose to be a black gay man in Newark, Ohio. You know, I did not choose that. If I would have chose that, I would have moved to a big city, but I am who I am, and others are who they are. And we just want to be, just be you, that would be my message to people in this audience and people in our community, is that when we come out, when people recognize that we are your brother, your sister, we're your coworker, we are your collective official, we are your lawyers, we are your people that own small businesses, we're in our community, we are in this great city, and it is a great city, and we are, it's 2016. And I don't consider myself a special person, I don't consider myself to need special classifications, but there are discriminatory practices against LGBT community members. And just as a black person, there are discriminatory practices against people of race. As women, there are discriminatory practices against gender. And so at certain points in our society and in our community, we as legislators need to take forthwith and provide the need of protections for certain marginalized parts of our community. And so that's all we're, that's all I'm asking for this council to support tonight, and, you know, I just want to thank, I know my pastor spoke earlier, and I am, if you want to talk about identity, I am a Christian, my pastor spoke earlier, and several of the members of United Church of Grand over here in the audience with me, so I would thank my church family for being with me tonight, and, you know, let's see, Sean's back there, he's one of my good friends, but it's, I lost my train of thought, but it's, I'm a gay, I'm a Christian, I'm a gay man, I'm a black man, I'm a homeowner, I'm a dog owner, I have many identities to who I am, okay? But I, I think we just need to be a community, a Newark that loves each other, respects each other, and I don't want you to tolerate me, I am a human being, accept who I am, don't just tolerate me. I am who I am, I'm to be accepted, and I have intrinsic worth and value, as each and every one of us as Americans, we do. And we just celebrated 240th birthday of our nation, and I agree with the comments that were saying that, you know, we are making progress, you know, we went, several of us went to the play 1776, some of us went twice, and, you know, the issue of slavery came up in that musical in a debate during the Declaration of Independence. Well, today, this is our cause, this is our cause to provide protections for the LGBT community, and I am so hopeful that Newark will be able to join the chorus of cities across our state that have adopted similar legislation, so that hopefully, something in Columbus will be adopted and the whole state will be covered. So I am so proud that we will be able to adopt this tonight, and hopefully, some folks in Columbus and Washington will follow suit. So with that, Mr. President, I know I probably spoke longer than usual, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else on 16-18?
Mr. President, Mr. Rath, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank Councilman Blake for bringing this forward, and I'd just like to say that there's never a justification for discrimination, there's no damn excuse for it, and that's the bottom line. I'd also like to thank Equality Ohio for working with us on this proposal, and you know, myself, being...
And, you know, myself, being born a street male, I would like to see everyone have the same rights I have. And that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. I've got all kinds of things going through my mind, and all kinds of thoughts, and all kinds of beliefs, so over are based on my experience as a government-elected official, so are based on my experiences, based on religious preferences and beliefs. Some of them are based on discriminations that I've experienced myself. I'm not, you're wondering if copying me would be discriminating against. I tried going up in Western New York, in an Italian community with a name like Raff. I'll show you my Dr. Seuss lunchbox, the rock cover Carl Colagi, Angel of the Dizzy, he had, because I was discriminated against for a variety of different reasons back then. Generally, that's the only reason for bringing this up, but I know it's not easy. But I also understand the business owners' comments. I try to take everything into consideration, and I know there are acts of discrimination, both by being discriminated against, as well as being accused of discrimination, whether that is in fact happening or not. I've got to tell you that I agree in part with some of the comments that Mark Paul made. And that is, in one section of this, in Section 3, Letter B, it says, "Specific steps shall be taken under division of personnel to provide fuller employment opportunities and to encourage broader participation of the minority members of our community in the city's employment process." And I find that to be discriminatory myself. So I am going to propose an amendment to strike Section 3, Letter B, from the ordinance.
Mr. Raff has asked to amend 16-18-A by striking, say your amendment, Mr. Raff.
I would like to strike Section 3, Letter B.
B?
Not the entire section, just Letter B.
Is there a second? Mr. Sassen?
On.
Okay, I'll give him that.
It's on the second page, above the middle.
Section 3, what it says, "Chapter 254, Employees Generally"--
Yes, Section B.
--and Section B. Would you like to strike the whole Section B?
Does that sound clarification, or is that--
Sure.
Director Sassen, what's the implication with striking out Section B?
Well, Section B's been a section of the law since probably about 1872, when this was passed. It's contained in all nondiscriminatory provisions throughout state, local, federal law, which basically simply gives direction to our city personnel that it should be our objective to develop programs that encourage the hiring of minority members of the community to overcome essentially 400 years of discrimination. That is the whole point of the Civil Rights Act, to include provisions like this, to strike that and remove at least 45 years of the last history of the city, too.
I have a follow-up.
Mr. Fraser?
By striking this, do we remove the opportunity for other non-protected members of getting employment? Or what is the real impact to non-protected members by striking this out?
It doesn't really have any impact on persons who are not members of a protected class. Striking this section would have an impact on the city's hiring practices and expectations consistent with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 with regard to members of protected classes, and those having included race, religion, gender, and national origin, and as proposed here, sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. So it doesn't do anything to the rights of those of us who don't find ourselves in a protected class, because we don't need to be in a protected class. We've enjoyed that privilege for the past 400 years. What it does is it guts that requirement of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and it's required governments to actively pursue efforts to overcome that 400 years of discrimination.
So is there a second to Mr. Raff's amendment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Raff, he's calling forward.
Are you done? Are you?
Anyone else? Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Allington. Always a pleasure. The reason why I voted no on the amendment was I don't see the need to change from transgender to sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and to have such a comprehensive amendment placed outside of committee, I just prefer the due order of process over them making last-minute changes to legislation. Overall, as a community, the 18th largest in the state of Ohio, there is a need to protect marginalized members of our community, and there is a need to treat everybody equally, and there's a need to continue to make progress, to continue to pass transformative legislation that makes our community better. I understand that this is a hot topic item for everybody in the room, and however, our community has a lot of needs that are outside of this. And if this offers some grandiose level of protection that is very hard to enforce, I am all for it. However, the needs of our community is caring for one another. The needs of our community is figuring out long-term solutions to financial problems. We could continue to debate divisive issues when the need is to come together and work for the better of our community. And so, Jeremy, great job in pushing this through. The real question is, what's next? And we can pass legislation that everybody can gather around and promote, however, the fundamental problems with our community still remain, and that is a 22.1% poverty rate and a median income that's well below the state average. And so I look forward to working towards real solutions, and I look forward to passing this to help members of our community that are marginalized. But our issues still remain the same after this legislation, and we have to come together and make a better community. And we're bound on that.
Mr. Fraser, anyone else? Mr. Marm?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeremy, I want to thank you for all of the work that you have done on this ordinance. I am going to echo something that Mr. Fraser indicated. I always find it difficult to pass legislation that is difficult to enforce. I find it somewhat appalling that we have to come up with legislation like this in our society. We should be able to just say, there should just be no unfair discrimination, and not have to deal with it. Unfortunately, we do have to sometimes legislate morals and values, and I hate that we have to do that. And not to say that those morals and values are the same for everyone, but yet, in reality, should we not just treat everybody as an American citizen? Should we not be able to just say, you are not allowed to discriminate against American citizens, or anybody who resides in the United States? Should we not be able to just say that and make it not labeled? A gentleman indicating that he's an American indicates that he's labeled the fact that he has to state that. It should not happen. And I find it difficult that we have to vote on something like this with such precision as having to come up with different words in order to make sure that we're doing what is best, when in reality, why don't we just say, let's just not, we're not allowed to unfairly discriminate? And in reality, who makes the decision? It is not us. It's the judicial side that will decide upon that. And that's where it becomes even more difficult, again, to enforce. The whole process is a lengthy process. This is not the solution. And I also want to further echo what Mr. Fraser said. We have other issues that we have to deal with. Hopefully, this might help in that, but it's not the solution. It's not going to solve all the problems. I am going to support it because I think that even if it just gives the mindset that we should not unfairly discriminate, anything that indicates that, I will be in support of. I'm not saying that my religious beliefs agree with all of these beliefs, but yet, because I can tell you that a priest in the Catholic Church said that they will have to hire somebody that it goes against their religion. Go ahead, fight the Catholic Church. It's going to be a tough fight. I know that. It's a reality. It's not fair, but it's a reality. So therefore, I am going to support it, because I think that it might help somewhat, but it's not a solution.
Thank you, Mr. Marm. Anyone else who will vote? Hottepin's call a roll vote on 16-18-A.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-18-A passes 10-0. Now, I understand how exciting this-- I understand how exciting this meeting can get, but I'll give you a couple minutes if you'd like to go ahead and go. I'll give you a second or two. Cool, is that?
That's right.
Okay, here we go. Let's go back. Let's go with 16-25.
Ordinance 16-25 by Mr. Fraser, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and ordinance amending Chapter 454 and Chapter 407 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio regarding the regulation of parking vehicles in the downtown area.
You've heard your second reading of 16-25. What does your wish?
Mr. President? Mr. Fraser? I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1625.
Second? Easy for you to say.
Yes.
Second by--
Autumn.
Is there any discussion on 16-25?
Well, Mr. President, this is a way for the city to enforce parking downtown, updating our ordinances, and also encouraging businesses, and a general improvement to the parking situation downtown without a cost.
Mr. Fraser, anyone else? I disagree more. Mr. Johnson? Anyone else? Hottepin's call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-25 passes 10-0. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 16-26.
Ordinance 16-26 by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 965 Mount Vernon Road, City of Newark, Wickham County, Ohio, from that of RM, single-family residence, medium-density zoning district to GB, general business zoning district.
16-26 will be referred to the planning commission, and then we'll come back to this. Next, we have 16-27.
Ordinance 16-27 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, and ordinance to provide for the issuance of $1,120,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of various street and parking lot improvements, sidewalk construction, and lighting improvements, and all necessary occurrences thereto in declaring an emergency.
16-27 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marm?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-27.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-27? Seeing none, Hottepin's call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-27 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 16-28.
Ordinance 16-28 by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, and ordinance providing for the issuance of notary, $1,730,000 East Main Street Improvement Refunding Bonds and declaring an emergency.
16-28 is also on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marm?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-28.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-28? Seeing none, Hottepin's call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-28 passes 10-0. Next, we have 16-29.
Ordinance 16-29 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, and ordinance levying an additional income tax of 1/4 of 1% for the purpose of raising general operating capital improvement revenues specifically and exclusively dedicated to the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, bridges, and sidewalks, and for the capital improvement needs of the police department and Division of Fire within the Departments of Public Safety on all taxable salaries, wages, commissions, and other compensation as set forth wherein, as well as all taxable net profits earned by the businesses, professions, and all other activities as set forth herein in providing for the collection and enforcement thereof.
16-29 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 16-53.
Resolution 16-53 by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of 16-53. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marm?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-53.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-53? Seeing none, Hottepin's call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-53 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 16-54.
Resolution 16-54 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-54. Mr. Marm?
Mr. President, make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 16-54.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marm?
Yes, Mr. President. These are funds that are being provided by a grant, and they need to supply immediately, These are funds that are being provided by a grant, and they need to supply immediately, so we need to act to the right.
Mr. Marmy, our office called a roll vote, waiving the two-day reading.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 16-54.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 16-54? Our office called a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-54 passes 10-0. Next, we have 16-55.
Resolution 16-55 by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to participate in the ODOT winter contract, O18-17, for road salt and declaring an emergency.
16-55 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What did you wish?
Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt 16-55.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 16-55?
Mr. President. This enables our service director to negotiate pricing and secure purchase of future salt used for use to the upcoming winter. We won't accept delivery of that salt at this time, but it will secure the salt be delivered at a time to which we need it.
Thank you. Mr. Raff, anything else? Anyone else? Our office called a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-55 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 16-56.
Resolution 16-56 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, a resolution providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Norfolk, Ohio of a question as to the passage of a one quarter of 1% additional income tax levy dedicated to general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, bridges, and sidewalks within the municipality and to the capital improvement needs of the police department and division of fire within the Department of Public Safety in equal shares not to include buildings or real property.
16-56 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 16-57.
Resolution 16-57 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
16-57 will be held for two weeks. Next, on the roll, we have 16-58.
Resolution 16-58 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mr. Marmy?
Mr. President, I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 16-58.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that we do because we act out because it's a payout for an employee, and we always want to give them the money as quickly as possible so that they'll pay facing the interest charge.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Our office called a roll, waiving the two-day reading.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to adopt resolution 16-58.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 16-58? Seeing none, our office called a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Aletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
16-58 passes 10-0. That includes our legislation in that. Thank you. Next, we have our second section of comments for citizens. The same rule applies. Again, this is non-debated council. This is just your opportunity to make a comment. Do we have anyone? Again? Do we have anyone else that's going to want to make a comment?
I'm here for the tax, the tax. I'm going to tell you guys, oh, I'm sorry, Tim Walden, 167 South Side Street. You know, this tax going on there again. This is the fourth time in my history that I'm up here that you guys, the city hall, have put a tax up again for street. Too bad Les, uh, two, two, Les Johnson's not, isn't still alive, but he'd be up here yelling about it. A lot of you guys don't even know who Les Johnson was back then. He would've been up here every week talking about it. The people had spoken three other times that they do not want any more taxes in this city for roads, for fire protection, and all that stuff. So why are you guys wasting people's time, you guys' time, and stuff, and putting it back on the ballot? I know the streets are bad, but you got, how are you going to sell? How are you guys going to sell a new tax plan when you are putting millions down on a square, putting runabouts in? And then you guys out here on the streets, in the neighborhoods, it got potholes the size of Buick's. You are not, as long as you guys keep building this downtown the way you guys are, I'm not against the sewer project now. The sewer project is mandatory, and that's mandatory. If we fixing it up, if the roads and stuff are moving it, narrow it down, make it two-way around the square, even Carl, Carol over there said, it took 135 years for people to learn how to go around a square one way. How many years is it going to take for people to go around two ways? I mean, it's going to take 100, 200 years for people to learn how to go around a square two-way, and you guys are narrowing the streets down. And how are you guys going to tell the people to vote for this, the fire protection, when you guys, big headlines? City Council for election left several of you guys got a campaign competition for the fire department. And even Blake, on his website, he sticking his head out, fire truck waving. How are you guys going to do it now if you guys get more taxes? You guys are going to get paid more this time for running for office for the fire department? I mean, it's just, it's mind-blowing. You guys don't listen to the people. Every city council in the last 30 years, different people, and trying to put a levy on it. People don't want it until you guys prove that they can do it. Take the money, you guys can actually tonight, Rule 922, can stop that money downtown. Tonight, you guys can stop it just like that and put, rest that money that you guys want to run about on the city streets, the neighborhood street. You guys can actually stop it tonight because every contract in this country got, or should be in it, every contract I had written for the government, for county, and federal government, got a card, had to have a card in it that you guys can stop at any time. It's called, I think it's called dual cards or something like that. You guys can stop it and take the money away. You have to pay for, up what you got to do, but you guys can stop that money tonight or next week and put it on the streets where it belongs. You guys don't need this levy. That's almost what, four and a half million dollars you guys got to put on the streets? Thank you. Oh, my thing, this is the same thing, I know my time right now, but 37 years ago, I stood back there, and I used the newspaper, and I did something. I was, I was young, but it worked. I got a mayor on, almost kicked off, I got mayor kicked off by election. I got two cops thrown in jail by my, my, the one I'm going to do. I got sheriff, I got some, well, what I'm going to do right now is, I'm going to see if I can get this website, people down there. 37 years ago, I made a statement in the newspaper, and I said, anybody that worked for the city knew, that's street, fire, anybody, if you had a quiet, a crack, a complaint, and your supervisors don't understand what you guys talking about, or you union don't want to do, contact me. Send your quiet, your complaint to me, and I'll bring it up here. I got a lot of complaints back then. So I'm making that, that, or, say again, 37 years ago, if any city employee, you know, like, you know, got a contract that should not have been signed, or somebody's having special meetings, that they're, and they're afraid to go to the supervisor or to the city officials, write down a piece of paper. Don't use the website, because you guys track that, and make it a nominee if you want to, like I did before, and I'll bring it to the city council. I will bring it to the front. If you have a complaint, anybody in the city hall, that's firefighters, police officers, city employees, even in the county, I don't care who it is, city or citizen, bring it to me, and we might get some stuff done again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walden.
Dave Humphrey, 154, looking to you, drive Heath. This isn't an open forum for you, ladies and gentlemen, but I do just want to present the question now. I think it might be more efficient than me trying to find all of you, anyone that might be interested in answering. I am just curious, and this is a legitimate question, because I am legitimately interested in the benefit of our, of our community and everybody being treated equally, because obviously, I don't know that there is a religion that would say that, a certain, well, I suppose there are some that say some are better than others, but anyway, but obviously, God has created all men equal, all men and women equal. But I guess my question is, is just in the vagueness, in the ambiguity, as was mentioned by some others, in 16-18, how is it that, and this is an honest question, I'm not trying to say it's sarcasm or with hatred or any, I'm legitimately curious, that anyone that does discriminate, how can it be proven that they discriminated by, for that reason? Or how can they prove that that's not why they didn't hire them? Oh, you didn't hire me because of my orientation or whatever the conclusion was on that? Or how can someone say, oh, no, no, that's why they didn't? I mean, how can that, how can a court system prove that? I guess that's what I'm curious of. And so, anyway, I say that, I'm not wanting to get in an argument or fight with anyone, so I'll just present that now. I'm going to hang around for a little while afterwards. I don't know how long you folks are going to chit-chat or drink coffee in the back. I don't know what to do. But I'd be, I just, honestly, there's nothing to know on that. So, anyway, thank you.
There's no coffee in Sydney.
Dennis Moore, 10 Pleasant Street. I want to thank you folks tonight. When I was 28, I left Ohio to go to Washington, D.C., so I could be myself. Now I can maybe stay home and be myself, and I appreciate that. I do believe, Mr. Marmy, that this is unenforceable, but I believe the message you send to the young people may be the people that say, I can stay now. I don't have to go somewhere else to find myself. I think it's a healthy message and a hopeful message, and we need help in these days. With all respect to religious freedom, yes, I believe in God, and I also believe that we were created in the way we're created, and love is love. So I do appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
First of all, I would like to thank all the public service.
Tell me your name and address again.
Oh, Karen Rucker, 130 Delmar Avenue, Norfolk, Ohio.
Thank you.
I would like to thank all the public servants for the hard work that we do. We're not on the inside, we really don't know what you all do, but I know that you all make an effort to do things. I would also like to thank the public service, like the police officers, the firefighters, and the school teachers that stand behind them. And we got to understand, and I'd like the job that the mayor's doing downtown and all the, the process he's going on. People don't like it, but we have to learn to go with the change. Norfolk downtown need a overhaul or remake or whatever you want to call it, and anytime there's a change, people do not like it. 37 years ago, we didn't have these cell phones. We got to move, we got to move with the times. And if you notice, in Heath, Ohio, they have lead in the water. Grandview, they have lead in the water, and all this stuff going on in Florida, and we better be careful. We might be next, it's probably there, but they just haven't let us know about it. So we have to appreciate what you all are doing for us and stop complaining, and our community is just as good as we make it. And then also, another comment about, we're talking about, you know, about this LGBT thing, and it just came from my mind that I know a young man, he put, was putting him down, he talked about it terribly, terribly, he talked about it. And then when he found out about his son, his son went to commit suicide. And like I said, we have to be very careful what we send out into the universe and how we put labels on people, how we talk about people. Like I said before, we have to clean our own backyard up first because you never know what's in your own family. So we got to cut it out and treat people nice, treat them with dignity, pride, and respect. Like I said before, if they can take care of your kids, they can teach your kids, the pilots and everybody else with these high-powered jobs, they're there, so why are you going to discriminate against these people? These people are human beings. They got feelings too, and the people need to cut it out, take care of our kids, make sure that we are teaching them the right thing. And as I heard, all the, hear all the time, there's everything with drugs going on, so this is what we should be concentrating on, trying to keep our streets safe, stop putting the police officers down. They call you all pigs, you know that, don't you? And I tell them.
Well, you do.
And I tell them that P stands for protect, that I stands for intelligent, and that G stands for gratitude. We have rotten apples in every profession. If you don't know what's going on in the inside, get out there and volunteer. People say, oh, I'm bored, this and this and that. Get out there and volunteer. Go into these nursing homes and volunteer. Be a leader in your community. Stop polluting and trashing up the, you know, city of Newark. Don't do that. You know, this is your community. You have to live in there. And stop trying to judge people. I'm not going to use my energy judging nobody because that's not my job. And like I said before, the reason why a lot of these things are sent down our path is to see if we're Christian or not, because God loves us unconditionally. So who do we think we ought to be judging? Somebody. And that's all that I have to say, and I want everybody to keep smiling, and thanks again for all your hard work that you all do.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the city administration? Our law director, Seth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess to a certain extent, I'll speak as a citizen tonight more than law director. I'd like to thank Mr. Blake for bringing this particular piece of legislation, 16-18. Took a lot of courage to do that. I don't think if anybody didn't put themselves in Jeremy's shoes, may not appreciate that, may not appreciate that, but it takes a lot of courage for Jeremy to have done that. I'd like to thank Ms. Rucker for coming down. I liked very much all the comments that you made tonight. I agreed with you one hundred percent. And I agree with Mr. Moore's final comment that he made, that, you know what, maybe this isn't enforceable. Maybe it won't lead to lawsuits or criminal charges or any type of direct action from the law director's office or somewhere else. But I think it sends a very powerful message, not just to Newark, but to the rest of the state of Ohio. And I think council should be very proud of itself for unanimously supporting that legislation.
Thank you, Director. Seth, the mayor, all.
I truly echo what our law director said, and we've had a lot of discussion here tonight, and I'd say a lot of pieces of legislation, and this is probably government at its best, with citizens involved and truly participating, and this is what we're here for. So I want to thank everybody for going through this process, and truly, there are a lot of citizens going to thank them for coming in, taking time out of their evening to share their thoughts with us. So with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, you're first.
He wasn't ready. I want to comment about what a wonderful weekend, Fourth of July, our activities at the branch and everything. And also, I'm too, I'm very pleased with the participation of the people in this government situation where they scoop their minds about the ordinances that we have here tonight. And this is, I think it's so important that people do express themselves. And it's, it is government at its very, very best. And I'm very pleased that we passed sixteen eighteen eight. Thank you. Oh, I have to call in.
Captain Prue. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a finance committee meeting. Well, since the television's gone, I'm gonna shorten my speech. Just kidding, just kidding. I again want to thank Jeremy for what he has done. I think that it does send a powerful message. And for all the rest of you that thinks that tonight was a really good example of government, wow, we've got some great government coming up in the next few weeks. I'm gonna pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Maybe we can have the cameras here, not at all. You have nothing to say. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. I'll call service committee meeting for next week. And I guess I should apologize for attempting to undo forty years of civil rights. Certainly wasn't my intention, and I certainly didn't support this legislation tonight and everything that Jeremy's done and has said, for going through the steps of the process and doing it. And it's not easy, and I commend you for that. I guess for that, I'll shut up and pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Thank you, I'll pass. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, thank you to my fellow members and colleagues. I, when we talked about introducing this, I really didn't know where some of you would lie on this, so. But it shows that, you know, we do have common values, common interests, and we can, we did send a good message to the rest of the state tonight by passing what we did. You know, thank you, Doug, for all your help through this. We've worked on a few projects now on different legislative actions, and I've always appreciated the respect that you and I have had between each other and I look forward to working on some more projects in the future. So I do appreciate all of your help, so. I don't, I'm glad that Mr. Walden follows my Facebook page, so. He left, but I'm glad that he does that. And, you know, I just, I just want to clearly just say that I think there's always gonna be some naysayers. I mean, in the future that we have, the income tax issue or whatever levy proposal we give to the people, there's always gonna be naysayers. But I think if we need to stay positive and come out as a team effort, then we'll be able to do good things for Newark. I'm leaving for Key West in the morning, so I appreciate us ending this meeting so I can get on a plane in the morning and get out of here for a little while. You know, a lot of emotions tonight, but we'll be able to lay on the beach tomorrow night, so. Thank you so much. I'll pass.
That's really good. Yes. Well, I don't know. Do we want to go around again a couple more times since Mr. Marmy had some other comments? Mr. Marmy will go back to you. Mr. Bub?
I'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Cos?
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate you very much. Lot of democracy in this room tonight. Good to see it happen. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Mrs. Floyd?
I do want to thank Jeremy. I think it was, you know, a great thing for the community, and I think it, I think the, I was so impressed with the audience, that they were so respectful of everybody else, no matter which side they were on. There was no booing or, you know, anything. I just, I was very impressed with the, with the audience that was here. Those of you who missed seventeen seventy-six at the Rees Center missed a wonderful show. It's by far one of the best local performances I've ever seen, and some people like Jeremy and I saw it twice. We liked it so well, and it was only on four times, so. But it was, you know, it was wonderful and sort of showed, you know, as a country, what we're all about. And I think that's been displayed here tonight. Thirdly, I want to mention, I know you've got an email about it, but just a reminder that tomorrow night from four to six at the west end of the Canal Market District, there're gonna be people there to talk about what the next phase of downtown is, is gonna happen. The, you know, it's already closed and that kind of thing, but just so you're aware. And if you want to come, be sure to show up down there. Well, we are now into another street being closed, and I know there are already gonna be problems in terms of traffic with posts enclosed, just trying to come down here. The traffic on Church Street and around the corner on Fourth was very heavy as people tried to figure out, okay, so how do I get here from there? And again, like the downtown project, it's gonna be great when it's done. It's gonna be a little bit difficult while we're in the process of it, but we'll get through it. And finally, the final Friday for July is downtown, and it is an art show, which will mostly be on the south side of the square and in the alley that goes to the Canal Market between the square and the Canal Market area. And there are now new murals painted on the sidewalls of those buildings that would be interesting to see. There is going to be a history tour. There's gonna be one at four, one at six, one at eight. And it's going to, there're gonna be guides that are gonna guide people around downtown and show them a variety of places, including Clearover to the canal, painting to the locker around the other side of the works. But it's, there will be ads and places to show you that. And part of that includes a quilt show, which is at First Presbyterian Church. And it's, once all the quilts are in there, for anybody who loves quilts, it's a beautiful show. So I hope some of you can be. This is July twenty-ninth, the final Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Frazier?
Well, I, since you mentioned it, I'll say a couple words.
What time's your flight, Jeremy?
And are we invited? 'Cause I could stay here all night, but excuse myself. So congratulations, Jeremy, and I know with a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of personal sacrifice. And it's a tough thing to do, and to stand up and be that voice of reason and be the one that's driving it. And, and I'm in the same boat now with this taxation issue. I spent the majority of my holiday weekend because I said that this is the most important presentation of my life. Because what it is, is what is the tax system going to look like to the city of Newark ongoing indefinitely? And are we able to solve the issues of our community? The biggest fear that I have is a permanent tax that negates our economic growth and further deteriorates our community, and does not solve the fundamental problems of our government. And I was elected in this position to provide solutions and alternatives and creative solutions at that. And although there is a lot of content in that presentation, I thought it was necessary to educate everybody to work from the same seat of the chair. What are the income taxes surrounding us? What are the property taxes surrounding us? How much do we really pay? And how much are we asking the voters to contribute? And so I would beg council to reflect on these issues and reflect on these items. And if there are alternatives, and if there is compromise, I pray that it will be reached because this is a real issue for our community, and it will determine the future of our community. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Hall?
Yeah, I'd like to call our ways and means. Can we be next Monday? And without us. Thank you.
And that's all. Well, I think we've probably all been here long enough. Jeremy, I would like to say congratulations. Nice job on the legislative decision. Our next committee meeting will be Monday, July eleventh, five-thirty here in this room. Next full council meeting is two weeks, well, actually, not quite two weeks, from tonight, July eighteenth, which is the Monday at seven o'clock. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, Mr. Cos, second by Mrs. Roletta, first by Mr. Raff.
Aye.
Both at the same time. Go to adjourn.
Thank you.